Good evening, welcome to the September eleventh, two thousand and twelve, meeting of the East Hampton Public School Committee. We'll start this evening with announcements. Superintendent Paulinsby? Oh, wait, I have to make the first announcement. I've got it. I have it. I know I have it, it's right here. Here we go. This meeting is being recorded by the East Hampton Public Access Cable. The next school committee meetings are September twenty-fifth, October ninth, and October twenty-third. There's no school on Monday, October eighth, due to the Columbus holiday. The school committee would like to thank, recognize and thank Tim for his service in taping tonight's production. East Hampton Public Access Cable is always looking for volunteers to help. If anyone is interested in helping tape city government meetings, please contact Kathy at four one three two zero three one three six zero. So now, correspondence. We have correspondence, don't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've got a couple of pieces.
I just left it bringing up, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Just a reminder about the charting the course seminar for school committee members, we received notice of that. If you're interested in going, that's always fun. And we received notification from MEMZI updating the status of our AP program. Some of the points that are highlighted are, last year, EHS was bumped up in status from the launch status to the launched gain status. This year, we've been bumped up again to the gain status due to our continued success in the program. Our number of qualifying scores on AP exams now exceed the state average, and that is very impressive, obviously. The number of scores jumped from a hundred and eighty-two in two thousand and eleven to three hundred and forty-three in two thousand and twelve. And then, judging from the rest of the letter, MEMZI is continuing, or the funding is continuing through this school year and is winding down into late twenty thirteen, correct?
That's right, although this year, they are diminishing the funding in all categories. So, we are currently in discussion about how we are going to deal with that in the district.
I hope we can continue that. That's it.
Okay. Right. I think, yeah, I mean, it's terrific to see the impact, but as we knew, this grant was gonna go for a certain period of time, and we have supported the overall initiative into advanced placement courses by also trying to find corresponding support for the existing advanced placement courses that fall outside the focus of the MEMZI grant, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we've already been doing more than was expected under the terms of the grant to support this program in our schools. All right.
With great success.
Yes, terrific. Now we've got some super folks to thank for, under gifts, for their help. I'll entertain a motion. But I think we should read these. Mike, you want to be honest?
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude and appreciation the following gifts from Parkview Landscaping Incorporated. That's Brian, Sue, Kyle, Keith Colby, Jeff Tenirovic, Josh Grishon, Jess and Mike Robbins, for the donation of two days of work trimming shrubs, delivery and installation of mulch to improve the garden space around the front of Whitebrook Middle School. And I haven't seen it, but I'm told that looks wonderful.
That's awesome.
Also, gift from Sharon Mallin for the donation of all the work done to improve the front garden spaces around Whitebrook Middle School that are a part of the first gift, and the next gift, Dawn Young, for the donation of all the work done to improve the front garden spaces at Whitebrook, and Debbie Laballe for the donation of all the work done to improve the front garden spaces, and Hannah and Catherine Wazinski for the donation of all the work done to improve the front garden spaces around Whitebrook, and the donation of the Bronberg family for all the work done to improve the front garden spaces in landscaping around Whitebrook, and finally, to Alice Silveria for the donation of all the work done to improve the garden spaces around the front of Whitebrook Middle School.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion? Comment?
I just wanna, I wanna make a few comments. If you haven't gone down to see the entryway to Whitebrook, you really must go see it. It's just amazing, the difference, and I certainly want to thank Sue Colby and her husband and his company for the work that they volunteered to do, because without their help, they came in as professionals and really just made such a difference in our ability to be able to accomplish the goals that the parents had for Whitebrook. So, it is just such an improvement, and it looks wonderful, and so I hope everybody will go and see it and thank these people, all the people Mike mentioned, for all the wonderful work they did to improve the facility of our middle school.
Yeah, and I agree, the service of professional multiplies the volunteer efforts of everyone else, so, thanks.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded, any further comments? Then enthusiastically, all those in favor? Aye. All right. There doesn't appear to be anyone here to speak on a matter that's not on the agenda, right? So I think we can move through the public speak and dive right into the subcommittee reports, if that's okay?
We do not have a finance subcommittee report, but to the finance subcommittee, we will be scheduling a meeting very, very soon.
Thank you. Policy review, we're gonna walk through the second readings of state mandated, and I think we had a conversation the last time about state mandates, and continue to be in touch with our legislators about state mandates. These are just sort of policy changes, but sometimes it's useful to remind folks that a lot of what we do in East Hampton is mandated by the state.
Okay, well, four of the policies that you see were second readings were state mandated, where we simply added the term gender identity to the following, to the policies, and they are the AC nondiscrimination, ACA nondiscrimination on the basis of sex, GBA equal employment opportunity, and JB equal educational opportunities. So if we wanna take those for a motion for the second reading.
So AC, ACA, GBA.
And JB.
And JB. Move that the school committee vote a second reading and approval of those four policies. AC nondiscrimination, ACA nondiscrimination on the basis of sex. GBA, no, JB.
GBA.
GBA equal opportunity employment, and JB equal educational opportunities.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the change in the language for four school district policies in line with state mandated changes, AC, ACA, GBA, and JB. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Then we also have second reading for approval to revise the policy BDC executive sessions to policy BEC executive sessions to incorporate changes recommended by the MASZ.
Right.
If anybody would like to make a motion to approve those?
I move that we accept the second reading?
Second reading.
Is it the second reading of the BEC?
Right.
Right.
And, I didn't catch the other one.
That's it.
That's it.
Okay. Executive session policies.
Second. Motion made and seconded, I'll just offer the brief comment that basically what this, well, one of the most important things, it seemed from my perspective, was that this just outlines the procedure by which executive session information is released into the public realm by, and that there would be a review between the chair and superintendent on a quarterly basis, or on an as-needed basis in between those times, just to see if any of the information in previous executive sessions is now able to be released. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
And, second reading on policies IJNDD social media and JM acceptable use policy for changes recommended by our technology director and superintendent to bring these policies up to date with today's technology and practices. We would need a motion to, for the second reading.
I move that we accept the second reading of the IJNDD social media policy, the JB equal educational opportunities policy, and the JM acceptable use policy.
Motion.
Not the JB.
JB's already done.
JB's good.
JM.
Right, not JM. Second. Motion made and seconded for the changes in social media policy and acceptable use policy. Further comment, questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we have first readings for the EBC emergency plans and JLC dash one student and health services and requirements. The subcommittee met and discussed these on August thirtieth, and I apologize for not having those minutes, but I will for the next meeting. But this, we're proposing we adopt these new policies based on state mandated changes regarding medical emergency plans. Would you like to comment on the emergency medical status?
Yes, we were required by the state to submit the plans that we currently had, and that we are given time now to bring the appropriate people together as mandated by the state to look at our emergency medical plans and update them, revise them to align with the state mandate. So that's what we'll be doing through our crisis and safety team meetings. And I did submit our current plans already, meeting the deadline.
And actually, if we wanna do all three of these first readings together, then the next first reading is for policy ACB dash eight, section five oh four and ADA procedure to simply change the name of the district's special education director who was named in the policy.
And we're not naming it, we're just naming the position, though.
No, we're replacing. The requirement that the special ed director is named in the policy.
So those three, we would need a motion for, to approve the first readings.
Make a motion that we approve first reading of the ACB dash A, section five oh four and ADA procedure, the EBC emergency plans, JLC dash one student health services and requirements.
Motion, sorry.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, further questions or comments? All, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right.
You have in your package minutes from a CES meeting last week, and if you have any questions, you can ask, otherwise, that's what we discussed. I will be providing a written report like this for each meeting now.
Wow.
Are you, you're on the board, are you an officer?
Board of Governors.
A promotion.
Nope, that's what they are.
Oh, okay.
At CES, I'm the East Hampton Public School Board of Governor representative.
Gotcha, okay. Okay, you could call it a promotion, we didn't know that was the official title before.
Well, it's a, part of the reason, well, we're being required to write this, plus you can all see how exciting these meetings are going to, so at some point, somebody else may wanna take over, but.
Okay, thanks very much. Do we have any other items? By the way, I'm sorry, I should, I meant to say this earlier when we were looking at these scores for the AP results, because I hope that somewhere out there, someone in the, in the media world will, will see this, that the numbers that you quoted from the chart that are, that are part of the public record are only for math, science, and English combined, and I know that the enrollment this year in one of the other AP offerings is also up near forty more students.
Yes.
So, that's better than ten percent on top of the number of folks enrolled through last year, through the class of two thousand and twelve, and the Massachusetts number is almost half of that.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, I don't know what's true in the rest of the valley, and I'm sure that other schools, because we're fortunate for where we all live and the, and the, you know, the value that people place on education throughout the valley, but I think it's really pretty extraordinary. It would be great, I would even go so far as to recommend that if we haven't done it this way already, that we re-release this to the press. I hate to task you with that, but I would almost want to send just this chart.
Okay.
To the, to the local media outlets, just for emphasis, because it seems like it's the kind of thing that, that parents would care about, and, and, you know, pictures tell a lot of people things that all the words that we say here might not, so.
Okay.
If it's easy.
It's easy.
To do. I don't wanna make something that's complicated.
I'm just gonna jump in real quick, talking about communication, that's one thing that I've been noticing is that, and I don't know how to change this, other than people need to be pushed a little and made more knowledgeable of the, of the website and news that's out there, but typically, elementary student, parents who don't have kids in any other school, that's their focus, and they really don't know what's going on in any of the other schools, and same with, people only focus on the middle school and the high school. There's so much going on in the entire district to celebrate, and especially at the grade school level, when parents are saying, "I just will hope that there's a lot going on at the high school that's gonna be good for my kids." Well, there is, and there's constant news about it, but how to get people to be aware of that and check that on a regular basis, so that is probably a good reason in support of what Peter's saying, to somehow get that information out.
Absolutely.
I think we did talk with, at, at one of the presentations by the principals, I remember a conversation about parents and even school committee members wanting to be able to view the information that was going home in that, in that format, the newsletters. I know that we've often seen, particularly the ones from Maple, as part of our packets, and I think you're right, going back to this environment that we exist in now, it's not just a nice thing to do, but strategically, I think it's a wise thing for folks, you know, parents of a first, second, third grader, they have two, three, four, five years of information flow about the tremendous things that are happening in the middle school, and then in the middle school, three, four years of hearing about the tremendous things that are going on. I think that would be really helpful, and I don't, I am loathe to just mandate, here we're talking about the state mandating, and we're about to sort of mandate something, but if we could think about a creative way, it's great to have it on the website, but you're right, I don't think everybody goes to the website, particularly if they're getting a good information flow back from their own school. They're like, "I don't need to go look for more information," so.
Well, I will say that I've been talking with a few people about exactly that issue, and how we can better promote what's going on in East Hampton, and so, we've got some really interesting ideas, we're not ready to share them yet, but I think some little campaign that will help us really promote what all the good things are going on in East Hampton.
Yeah. Well, thank you, very much. Is there anything other that you wanted to add here, or that anyone else wanted to add as a matter of discussion? Okay, I would, I would simply remind voters that we have a primary election behind us, but we have a general election coming up, and there's matters of crucial importance to the East Hampton schools, both in terms of who we choose to be our elected representatives in government, but also making a specific decision as a community about the kind of finances that will be available to fund the quality education that we wanna provide to children here, and I urge everyone, whatever your opinion, to engage in debate and discussion about how the community should move forward in support of their schools. Okay, so now we're into the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Peter. It is my pleasure tonight to introduce our new Director of Special Education, Ann Knapp, and I've asked Ann if she would come up and just tell you a little bit about herself and what she's been doing since she arrived on the scene, and she's also going to tell you a little bit about the Special Education Program Plan Statement that you have in your amended meeting agenda. Ann?
Hello, everyone, good evening. I always, when I'm in front of a podium, I always feel like I should start off with fourscore and seven years ago, but I'm not gonna do that. A little bit about me, I've been an administrator in private seven six six approved schools, the Department of Developmental Services, and in public schools for over twenty years. I come to you from the Randolph Public Schools, which faced many of the same achievement challenges that we're facing here. I'm really excited to be here, one of the reasons why I'm commuting from Franklin to come work here is when I looked at everything that was available on the DESA website, I was so impressed with the procedures and structures that were in place already in the Special Education Department, and really allows us to really focus on student achievement and closing the gap between our Special Education students and our General Education students. I've had a wonderful greeting from everyone, everybody has been incredibly kind and helpful and informative. I've already worked closely with Nancy, Superintendent Follinsby, sorry, Ms. Gilfeather, and all of the principals, I've already met with the Parent Advisory Council Board, so it's really been a wonderful greeting into the district. So I'm excited to be here. As, you have a copy of the Special Education Program Plan Statement. This is something that the Department of Education has broken the state up into separate cohorts, and this was our cohort year, Soonhen Rashan filled this out before I came, and all it is, is a way for the state to track that we continue to follow the regulations. We're basically saying to them by signing this, we continue to do what we're supposed to do. So, thank you all very much.
Welcome.
Any questions for Ann?
Any questions?
Thank you, Ann.
Thank you, Ann, and welcome.
We look forward to Ann reporting from time to time on, on the initiatives here in the district for special education, because we have a lot of plans for putting some new things into place.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Terrific.
All right, next on the agenda is our preliminary enrollment numbers. Actually, since we, Sue Colby created this document for us, we've had a few other students move into our district, and I signed letters for choice students for a few other students as well, so we keep getting students in, which is, is a good thing. So we are up in our total numbers from last year, and our class sizes, as you know, we had to do some restructuring and eliminate a few positions, but, you know, with a, with some very careful planning and use of resources, we've kept our class sizes approximately what they were last year, as much as possible, and, and so that we can maintain the quality of our program here in East Hampton. Any questions that you have on the enrollment figures? Okay, so, we'll get an October first report where we'll have official figures. Mike?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I probably should've asked this when Ann was up, but, there's a number on page two of the Special Education Plan Statement that says the total number of students is sixteen thirty-nine, including charter schools, so I presume that doesn't include school choice, but, does that number include early childhood, or not? Do we know?
Sixteen thirty-nine, I believe it does, it must, because.
We have the number of sixteen thirty-three here.
If sixteen thirty-three is here, then that number probably needs to be bigger.
Right, that number plus.
On the report, or, and I don't.
Well, and it may be that it's changed since this report was written.
Well, that's true, I suppose, yeah.
Because the report was written.
Well, that's okay, it's not critical.
July.
July, yes, that was probably last year's number.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
Seven twenty-three, so those are the numbers.
It's a seven twenty-three, right, and we continue to get enrollment all summer long. Okay, next we have the results of operations, and I'm gonna ask Andy Paquette, our business management consultant, to come and give us that report.
Well, I'm happy to report that two months in, we're doing all right.
Yay.
We do, just all kidding aside, in discussions with Ms. Knapp's predecessor, we also, Ms. Knapp, we, we have some potential tuitions that are not reflected here, that once we get final numbers, you will see an adjustment regarding tuitions going out of district, so once that's finalized, in the next month's report, you'll see an adjustment regarding projected expenses for that. Grants are still coming in, as far as finalizing what it is that we're gonna be using, the grant and approval, we had to send back Title One, for example, based on some changes that they wanted to see in our original application, and that being said, I can answer any questions if anyone has regarding this.
Can you, just the reference to the tuitions?
Yes.
These are students that are special needs students?
Correct.
Okay. And are they students who are currently in, or is it just a change as to where we're sending tuition?
I believe that we had move-ins from, from out of state.
Yes.
So, and I'm, I'm doing this just for public, my own educational purposes, so this is a family that moved to the district with a child who has special needs, and because they come from out of state, how does the funding mechanism for that work? Can you just remind me? I know that if you move from one district.
It doesn't. No, there's, in Massachusetts, there's what's commonly called the move-in date, which is April one, so any student that is in district before April one, you are fiscally responsible for. Any student post-April one, and if they were to move, then the district that was the originator would be, the sending district would be responsible for. Obviously, unless we had a current student in our district that we would send out to a program or collaborative for some other reason, then we would be responsible for that as well. But out of state, it's the district responsibility coming in.
And what's the relief from the state? What support does the state provide?
There, they do have what they release sometimes late fall, early winter, a thing called Circuit Breaker Extraordinary Relief, and that's an application program where if you do have an increase in special education tuitions of a factor of your per pupil, your foundation enrollment cost, then you can apply, and then you get an additional Circuit Breaker funding adjustment to use in that fiscal year. You know, they're talking, it's like a hundred twenty-five percent greater than your foundation enrollment, so, to reach that threshold, they're talking a very expensive student, but it's something that obviously, once we see where our grants are and how other things have flushed themselves out budgetarily, and if we need to explore that as an option, we will.
I think Circuit Breaker was restored this year.
Correct, correct. They, we are budgeting at sixty-eight percent, they're talking between seventy and seventy-two percent reimbursement at the time, with the hopes of potentially being up to seventy-five percent.
But again, just to come back to that, even under the best-case scenario, twenty-five percent of the tuition for a student who's never been in our district, right, we bear, right? Roughly.
Correct, for all intents and purposes, yes.
And, and we understand why that law exists and how that comes about, but I, again, just helping people understand the budgeting process, I thought that the program that you and the superintendent did with Mike, that I saw, was helpful in terms of explaining some of this. I don't know if somebody will see this conversation tonight, but I think it's really hard to understand the financing of public education, and I'm just trying to, A, be sure that I understand it as a school committee member, but also hoping that the questions will help the citizens in the community understand, this is something completely outside of our control. I mean, in fact, the only way you could do anything about it is to become an unattractive community to live in, and that's completely contrary to everything that we're about and everything that we've seen going on in East Hampton in the twenty-five-plus years that I've lived here, is that it's becoming, you know, it was, it was a good place to live, and it's become nothing but better over the time that I've been here, so we're not likely to ever have that as a solution, nor would we advocate it, and that's, you know, that's an extraordinary cost that we just bear.
And what we do here, which is again, sort of, it's the good budgeting that we do, which is try and keep the prior year's receipts available to us, but what that ends up being is, whenever we have these things, we can maybe handle. But what that ends up being is, whenever we have these things, we can maybe handle one, you know, one move-in, but it'll, will eat into anything that we have for future planning purposes. If you remember, in the past years, budget developments, we've had, I don't say necessarily play a game to make light of it, but we were never sure if we were going to be fiscally responsible for one student. And so we had a choice during the budget development process of, do we budget for that with the understanding that coming the end of the year, we may not need it, or do we not budget for it? And then ultimately, potentially-
Take it out of other programs.
That's correct.
Right, but either way, once they're here, it's money that's not available for the program for the students who are in our schools. And that's part of what challenges us. Thank you. I don't know if other people had other questions for Andy.
Well, I have one question, I'm not sure it's for Andy, but on page forty-three, we talk about school choice in your report. How many teachers are supported by that account?
It is approximately, let me- Because what we end up doing, for lack of a, we back into that when you look at what it is that we're using through the numbers. So it's about, I'd say, between ten and twelve teachers that we'll end up using for that.
Just looking at it, it looks like it could be a lot more.
That's correct.
Because you have, what, about three million dollars worth of numbers here, or at least a big, a lot of numbers.
Correct. The total that we are starting the year with is the eight ninety-six. And so, you know, we are planning on using, I'd say ninety percent of that, which would be about ten to twelve teachers. Plus, we have to budget for, well, there's some question about budgeting for supplemental educational services for, through the Title I, you have to budget for SES. We've always used school choice as that funding source for the SES services. They're changing around whether or not you need to budget for that. And then in addition, quite honestly, this is going to be the second year in a row because of transportation, where we end up, if you go back and review when we built the budget regarding funding our transportation for both the regular, sped, vocational, McKinney-Vento homeless transportation, we are going to end up having to use some school choice funds for the transportation this year as well, as things stood when we built the budget. So, you know, we look to see as far as any changes, I mean, McKinney-Vento is a fluctuating number as well, but things like that. So this is year two of us having to target school choice funds for transportation.
Any other questions for Andy? Okay, thank you, Andy. And now we have the FY-12 Final Report of Municipal Expenditures, and-
I'll stay here, but I don't know if the mayor wants to-
Or Mike, who wants to talk about that one?
Well, that's the first one that you're getting from the finance director. And so it follows essentially the one that you've seen and your predecessors have seen for fifteen years. I don't know how much you want me to explain it, but I'd be happy to go through it if you'd like. If you have any questions.
Questions for Mike?
Did we also receive an email regarding this? Did we get it as an attachment email?
Well, it's not in the, it's not in the agenda packet, but I forgot. Is it a separate piece, might be?
That's okay.
It was a link in the email?
Maybe it was just-
I'm sorry, it was a separate, it was a separate file?
Right, 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 yep, okay.
And I'd certainly be happy to-
I was just, no, I was trying to remember where I read it. What about the third paragraph in the letter? I was confused about, it says, "This amount represents an increase in total education spending of just under one percent, excluding grants and school choice funds." We did, in fact, I thought we spent more than, in total, more than one percent more, right? Is that-
Well, I think compared to the number from last year, it's one percent more in total.
In total.
Now, that probably reflected a reduction on the city side and an increase on your side, I would think. Because I think the expenditure in the school budget for last year was higher.
Right.
But the net impact, and again, partly for my own education and partly for the community at large, is that we're trying to educate the children that we have at a total cost to the community that's roughly one percent more than it was a year ago. Is that a fair way to put it?
That's a fair way to put it.
Right?
Total cost, roughly one percent more.
And this includes non-net as well, this is total municipal expenditures.
Right, so the state considers some education spending important and some less important. So the less important stuff, like getting the children to school, is included in here.
Right. So I think that, again, I mean, that's just, there's clarity about that number, about what we're asking of the community of educators that we have in the community to do. I know that in October, we will see the final numbers. But as you've pointed out, we know that we have a couple of, you know, we have a second grade group, we have, I believe it's sixth grade, where we've got really solid numbers. And so the people in East Hampton, I think, can be assured that we are using funds. I apologize, my phone is on vibrate and it shouldn't be, forgive me. I think one of the points that we've tried to make, in terms of, one of the questions that I've heard in the discussion about the school budget is, what kind of stewards, both from the mayor's office and from the school committee side, are we of the community's resources? How carefully are we expending the money? And I think that that's, this is a part of the information flow that helps answer that question. Trying to be objective about it and helpful to people who are interested in that question.
So if, just to, I guess to follow through a little bit on that, if you look at the first, second page, what Melissa included in this that I didn't usually, is the actual spending. So I normally would have included the budget appropriation. So actual spending was a little bit higher than the budget. And that's likely because you had some prior year monies that were spent in the current year. There's this overlap of operating periods between school budgets and city budgets. And so the city budget wouldn't necessarily reflect. We show money that you hold over, you intend to pay, but we don't consider that a part of the future year's budget. Some of your expenditures fall, I think, into what we consider the current year, what you would have spent from the prior year, for lack of a better way to put it. It doesn't get less complicated as I talk, so I try not to-
But that amount that you referred to, right, you've got to bring us about forty thousand, forty thousand dollars.
Forty thousand dollars or so that you were able to spend. When you look at what the city's books put forward and what you actually expended, but that's not, on a fifteen million dollar number, that's not very much money. And that would reflect a little bit of that nineteen-nine, that that one percent wasn't new money. It was money that, just from an accounting point of view, got added into what your spending was. So that hundred and ninety, really, was only a hundred and fifty more. Because that forty, that difference, is really just an accounting difference, not a budgetary difference. And so we didn't, we, the city, didn't provide that forty, that was money that you had. I want to stop there, I think.
I think that's a good way of explaining it, Mike.
And then the balance of that report essentially is the backup information that we provide. And I'll give you the, I'll give you the short story since Peter had to step away. There was a, there was a hired business director here at one time named Candace Balzac. And Candace was very much a by-the-book sort of a person. And she was here during the period of time when net spending came into play and identifying how much the city is really paying and what's legitimate to count as a number. And the importance of that at the time was that the city was just meeting that spending. It was barely hitting the state number. We're happily over that now, and we don't have to worry too much about it. But every dollar counted and there was, there was a lot of push back and forth between the town government at the time and the school department and school committee at the time to make sure that whatever was reported was accurate and valid. And so there were formulas put into place that I talk about and I have talked about in the past, about how we count some of the city's side of the budget. And there were reporting requirements put in place that said, yeah, you report this, but you prove it. So these are mostly prints from the city's business accounting system. Just to keep doing something we've been doing for probably twenty years.
But I do want to clarify that, that doesn't mean that we don't operate by the book.
Oh, no, not at all, not at all.
But I'm talking to city and the schools as well, you know, so it's, everything is above board and legit.
Yeah, I mean, I think anybody looking at the reports that are available here, there's ample information readily available and in the public, right? This is all, you know, Sue has all of this available, it's, everyone on the school committee has it. Anyone who wants to attend a meeting can see this information. You'd be, you have to be willing to do some work, because there's a lot of reporting that goes on, but the information's all there. And I think it's really helpful for people to know. All right, any other questions or comments? And super, thanks, we can move to matters for action, yes?
Yes, we can.
Fantastic.
Start with the minutes.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the executive session meeting minutes of August 29th, 2012. Second.
Motion made in second to approve that eight twenty-nine, twelve executive session, school committee meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's see here. Okay, motion to approve the regular session meeting minutes of August fourteenth, 2012.
Yes?
Second.
Second. Motion to ma-, motion to approve the minutes of the fourteenth, August 2012, regular school committee meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then motion to approve the regular session meeting minutes of August twenty-nine, 2012.
Second.
Motion made to approve the August twenty-ninth, 2012, regular meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I believe, maybe I should have mentioned this, we are withholding the executive session minutes from August fourteenth, 2012, until all matters are resolved.
We should move it, though.
Yep.
Move it.
A motion to withhold those minutes.
Right.
Of August fourteenth.
Well, shouldn't we approve them? Withholding them is a matter of withholding them until it reads the policy that they can be released.
Right.
We should approve.
Well, we have approved.
Oh, we did?
We did.
We re-approved the regular session, I'm sorry, I misstated that motion, so-
I thought the fir-, I thought we just did three motions. I thought we did executive committee.
We did four.
Executive for eight twenty-nine, regular for eight fourteen, and regular for eight twenty-nine.
So we have executive for eight fourteen.
I'm waiting for the vote for eight twenty-nine, was it all?
Oh, yes, so the regular, let's do that first and then we'll come back. The motion has been made in second to approve, to accept the minutes from the meeting for August twenty-ninth, 2012, the regular meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Okay, so motion to approve the executive session meeting minutes of August fourteenth with the stipulation to hold them until all matters are resolved.
Second.
Second. Motion made in second to hold the executive session meeting minutes from August fourteenth until all matters are resolved. All in favor? Aye.
Then I'm staying.
Thank you. Got it, yep. Got it? That's okay, we can correct that, no worries. We will adjust, we'll have an abstention on the previous vote for the executive session on-
The twenty-ninth.
On the twenty-ninth, regular session.
Regular session.
And executive session.
And executive session, yes.
Okay. That makes sense, Sue? I know we're throwing you a lot of changes there. Okay, thank you. So they're going to DC.
Warrant, I'm going to do that last.
Oh, sorry, I was more excited about the kids going to DC, sorry.
Okay.
But we should pay people.
Good reason to be excited.
Okay, move to approve the school payroll dated August twenty-third, 2012, in the amount of two hundred fifty-five thousand, eight hundred twenty-four dollars and thirty-four cents.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve the school payroll dated twenty-three, August 2012, in the amount of two hundred fifty-five thousand, eight hundred twenty-four dollars and thirty-four cents. All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated August twenty-third, 2012, in the amount of eighty-three thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars, sixteen cents.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve the accounts payable authorization for twenty-three, August 2012, in the amount of eighty-three thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars and sixteen cents. All in favor? Aye, thank you.
Move to approve the school payroll dated September sixth, 2012, in the amount of four hundred forty-nine thousand, fifty-nine dollars and ten cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the school payroll dated the sixth of September, 2012, in the amount of four hundred and forty-nine thousand, fifty-nine dollars and ten cents. All in favor? Aye, thank you.
Move to approve accounts payable authorization for payment dated September sixth, 2012, in the amount of one hundred sixty-six thousand, fifteen dollars and fifty-two cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated the sixth of September, 2012, in the amount of one hundred sixty-six thousand, fifteen dollars and fifty-two cents. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
That's all warrants and payrolls.
Now we get to go on a trip. We get to move to the trip.
I move that we approve the Whitebrook Middle School, May twenty-ninth, thirty, thirty-first, 2013, eighth grade trip to Washington, DC, as requested by Pat Umel.
Motion made in second to approve the out-of-state field trip request for Whitebrook Middle School's trip to Washington, DC. All in favor? Aye. Great. Then we have a school choice opening request, two, pardon me, two requests. One is for a student for grade twelve, and one is for a student in grade six at Whitebrook Middle School.
Move to approve both slots.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. We also have the East Hampton High School Interscholastic Athletics Handbook. Got this. And we're, we're, correct me, Nancy, we're approving that as revised for this year.
Yes, that's right.
Right, hang on.
The only thing that was revised was the addition of the concussion portion.
That's right, all the concussion information.
Right, it includes updated information on the best practice in protocols for head injuries and concussion injuries. Correct?
I move to approve the East Hampton High School Interscholastic Athletics Handbook for 2012 through 2013.
Second. Motion made in seconded to approve the revised East Hampton High School Interscholastic Athletics Handbook for 2012, 2013. All in favor? Aye.
And move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So have a great night, folks. Are there more signatures that you need on?